We're all set, cable. It's not going to come on.
No, he said it will not come on.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Dayton. Before we get started here, would you please all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just like to make a statement before we get into some questions and answer. This is not going to be a long meeting. When we conclude what we have to say and do and take into consideration and make available to all the station color reporters that are here, we will more or less have an idea of what our next step in the procedure will be. We've been in constant contact with our legal counsel. He has advised us of the proper steps to continue on. At this point, this board has called its emergency meeting under Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, which states that an emergency meeting can be called by this board based on unexpected occurrences demanding immediate action pertaining to public safety brought on by the fire chief. A brief summary of these circumstances have all been posted in most of your editions of your papers. If at the end of this statement you want to go over them, feel free to do so. Just a quick summary of yesterday's occurrences. I received a phone call approximately between 1:15 and 1:30 PM from a reporter who happened to be in Taunton District Court. Obviously, they were there for another reason, but this young lady who was associated with Channel 10 made me aware that our fire chief was in the process of just being charged with four counts by the District Attorney's Office of Bristol County. That was the first that this board or anybody sitting in front of you today was made aware of what was going on. The investigation obviously had been ongoing by the Bristol County District Attorney's Office for some time. We were not made aware of any scheduled hearings or indictments or arraignments until this reporter actually told me. We were made aware after the fact. For that reason of the phone call, I thanked the person who made the phone call to me, based on Channel 10. We appreciate their forethought in letting us give us a heads up. From there, it was an afternoon full of questions and answers, phone calls, mostly from the media. We were trying to keep in touch with our town council to advise us what was going on. They called to the District Attorney's Office and New Bedford did not get a call back from this board. A lot of questions that you may have, that you may want to ask today, we can't answer because we're not aware of everything that went on. This was an investigation, again, by the District Attorney's Office. The charges were brought by the District Attorney's Office, not by the Town of Dayton. They investigated. They have four criminal charges that they have charged our fire chief with, and we will participate and cooperate with whatever they need from us. We're at the point today that this board, through the advice of our town council, have options of what should transpire as the next step in this procedure. The options that the law firm of Gay &amp; Gay of Taunton that represents the Town of Dayton has advised to us ranges from suspension with pay, suspension without pay, termination, administrative leave. These are the options that are left up to this board at this time. He has advised us, and hopefully, we have to make a decision whether it's in the best interest of this board or not. It's not the concern. What we have to do is what's in the best interest for public safety, for the residents of the Town of Dayton. We have a fire department that must be addressed, and the chain of command must be established on a temporary basis. That is our major concern, public safety. With that said, with all those options, do my colleagues have any questions or anything that they might want to discuss?
I would just comment that when all of this happened yesterday, my colleague Brett and I were actually in a meeting in Mansfield all afternoon, and we got word that Channel 10 had notified Mr. Cronin. But other than that, we were really out of the loop. I know what Dean was told when he got the call. The rest of the information I have, I got from the local media, either watching many channels, including the Boston stations, or going online and reading newspaper accounts, Taunton and Fall River, I believe it was. So at this point, and I know that the next date I saw was next March, the 17th, I believe.
Pre-trial.
So, other than that, I don't have a lot of comments. I'm not going to speculate. I'm not going to get into background or anything else on this. I'm still waiting for information myself. Other than that, I'm here today because this board has got to do something. We've got a fire department to run. This is a public safety issue. I want the local, I want our firefighters to know that this board supports them. They do their job. There will be leadership in that department, and the citizens of this town have to understand that the services that our emergency medical services and firefighters provide 24/7 will continue, and they will respond to any needs that our residents have.
Thank you, Nancy. Brett, how's that?
I just really wanted to echo what both you and Selectman Goulart spoke about. I think that as someone who found out about these charges, like Selectman Goulart did, largely through the news media outlets, I think it's not responsible or helpful for me to waste a lot of my time pontificating about an investigation that, quite frankly, I wasn't part of, nor was the Town of Dayton. So I'll just leave it at that.
Again, the options that have been passed on to us from town council, regardless of what we think is in the best interest for our own residents and the decision that we make today, will be passed on to the current fire chief as a written statement. He has legal representation, we've been informed. It'll all go through him. This board will not be dealing with the fire chief on a one-on-one basis, except for a disciplinary hearing, which is mandated before the next March 17th, I believe.
March 1st, 2017.
Okay. It's a pre-trial scheduled meeting in court. He will be advised, like I said, in writing of what we will decide here today. And at that time, if any of my colleagues have any kind of a motion they'd like to initiate, I'd be more than happy to address it.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that Fire Chief Anton P. Rodrick Jr. be suspended without compensation indefinitely.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ladies and gentlemen, that motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rodrick will be addressed and notified in writing, served in hand of this decision you just heard as soon as possible. We have reached out to him by emails, by texts, by phone calls in the last 12 to 14 hours. We have not had a response from him. He has not responded to any form of communication that we've attempted, so we will legally serve him the results of this meeting today. At this time, we're going to keep it short. I'll apologize upfront that if you have a question and that we can't answer it, it's not because we don't want to answer it, it's because we don't want to jeopardize this whole investigation by the District Attorney's Office in answering something that's not appropriate or correct. If there is something we can answer on a local level, we definitely will. So what I'll ask for approximately 15 minutes is anyone that is in this room, from one of the media's outlets, that would like to ask a question, just raise your hand, step up to the podium, address and identify yourself, and we'll do our best to answer what we can. Mr. Bagley, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
Hi, Adam Bagley from Channel 10. Obviously, you guys didn't find out about the actual charges until we spoke yesterday, but the District Attorney's Office said that they learned through your town that there was obviously an issue. Who spoke to them? What did you tell them? What can you tell us about how the District Attorney learned that this was an issue?
Good question. That we can address to a certain point. Approximately a little over a year ago, this town not only has their annual audit of the accountant's office, the treasurer's office, done by the state of Massachusetts, but we also have an independent firm that comes in and does an audit of all our books every single year, which is at the cost of the taxpayers. This is a backup and like a safeguard to having all our books clean. This practice has gone on for decades. It'll continue to do so. In addition, this firm that we now have onboard, Rosalian Clark, is one of the higher-rated firms in the state, does a individual department each year, goes from head to toe, right through their department, checking their books and seeing if there's any discrepancies or what have you. The audit that they chose to do about a year and a half ago happened to have been the fire department. Through their two- or three-day work in this room confined here by themselves and with access to all the records, they came up with some discrepancies pertaining to financial spending on behalf of the fire department. Upon that, they engaged our town accountant, who is responsible for okaying all the bills to be paid on a weekly basis on a warrant, and sat down with her and went through files of certain uniform allowance expenditures, clothing allowance expenditures, predominantly expenditures that is controlled by the department head, in this case, the fire chief. There were discrepancies. It was brought to our attention. We handed them to our town council. Town council reviewed them, agreed there were discrepancies, and he himself passed it on to the Bristol County District Attorney's Office. From there, the ball stopped rolling as far as the Town of Dayton was concerned because we're out of the loop. A few times, I had questioned our town council if he could give us any advice of what was going on, what we can expect. We were never given the answers, except for when and if something happens, we'll be notified. Well, to this day, we still haven't been notified by the District Attorney's Office, but we were made aware after a fact of our fire chief in court. Yes, sir?
Robert Gulston with Fox 25. Can you just explain what the clothing allowance is, kind of the theory of the purpose of it for the chief? What is this designed to do?
These are all contractual union matters with our public safety departments in town, whether it be fire, police, highway. They all get a uniform allowance, which is to be used for work-related clothing. Again, this is set up as a contract. We have three-year contracts with our fire departments, the union personnel. Our chiefs, who are non-union, follow union contracts for whatever department they're a chief of. And again, this goes through their everyday wear, their clothing, their shoes, what have you. Some of the expenditures were made on other than work clothing.
It's for work clothing. That's what the allowance is for.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Abby from New England Cable News. You had stated last night to one of the other stations that perhaps we're talking about more than $250 here, and is this indicative of a bigger problem? Is this the tip of the iceberg when it comes to...
Well, there was only maybe three or four invoices that we had initially been made aware of through the audit. Those that were obvious that popped out, and that was the end of it from there on. We didn't know how long this was going to continue, but our accountant, with her due diligence, continued to search more to see if there was any other problems. We like to rectify. This board is very upfront and very open to any questions that people have. We don't hide anything. Everything is pertaining to open meeting laws and what have you. We expose everything that we can.
Is there more problems, more money missing?
There may be more problems, yes.
Are we talking hundreds or thousands of dollars?
Yes.
Hundreds or thousands, more?
Yes, yes.
Do we think that this is the only individual who's responsible for this, or is the investigation going to open up dollars?
I can't go any further with that because, you know, we're not investigating. We plan on turning over what we have found to the District Attorney's Office.
Dean, just to be clear, he's facing a charge in court of less than $250, which seems like a sort of little petty thing, but you're telling me that this is a potential to be how much money? Can you give me a ballpark?
Well, it's going to be a substantial amount, more than that. I can't give a figure because we haven't really gone through it all yet.
Is it hundreds or thousands?
No, 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 not hundreds or thousands.
Tens of thousands?
No, no. Thousands, yes. But again, this is something that's out of our hands, but we're obligated. If that be the case, and it winds up that there is substantial amounts that the District Attorney's Office, they can always amend the charge. That's not up to us.
Why do you think he only pays, that's my follow-up question, why do you think he only pays charges then for less than $250?
Because that's all the District Attorney was presented at that time.
Gotcha.
Jennifer Egan from Channel 7. I recognize that you're saying that there may be more money involved here, but how important is $239 to your town? Why are you taking this action to suspend him without pay over that amount of money?
Well, that's not the issue as far as money. We're talking a leader of a safety, public safety department, who happens to be a titled fire chief that's only relegated to certain amount of fire chiefs in the state of Massachusetts. Along with that title, as a strong chief, goes complete trust and creditworthiness. He has offended not only this board, but the taxpayers of this town, whether it be $235 or $235,000. His trust now has been discredited. As far as other charges, I can't answer to the extent of what the District Attorney's Office is going to go after. I will say this investigation will definitely go on until March 17th, and I'm sure some of these charges will be amended.
I don't know if you've read about this in the paper, I assume you probably have, but there are court documents, and in them, the state police detective says that he insists, he's not backing down and necessarily admitting that he bought the clothes for someone else. He insists that they are for him, and he goes so far as to try them on, including a woman's tube top, capri pants. What's your reaction to that?
I'm disappointed that he even says something like that. Put yourself in that position, what are you going to say? I mean, you're not going to admit everything that went on, or else why go to court? Because then, when you're asked, "How do you plead?", you should just plead guilty and take the punishment, but no, that's the way the law reads. I have complete faith in the justice system. I really do, and the truth will prevail.
Were you surprised when all this came out? What were your dealings with him like in the past?
I was very disappointed, very disappointed. I think he's disappointed an awful lot of people in this town. He's lost my trust, this board's trust, and for that reason, we've probably made a little more effort to look into further accounting practices from that department.
Would you say you were blindsided by it, though? Like you wouldn't have suspected that he'd be capable of alleging...
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm only talking for myself, not for the whole board.
May I add something to that, Mr. Chairman? I did just want to add, and I read this just through, you know, the news media, through reporting, so, you know, unsubstantiated in a way. It's all allegations, but apparently, the girlfriend did admit that the pair of capris was purchased for her, so...
He does state in some, at least he stated to a state police detective that, at least initially, that they were for him, and that he goes running in that.
Again, I'll reiterate the statement I made about five, 10 minutes ago. I appreciate all you people here today because some of this information that you're telling us, this is the first we've heard of it, too. So, I mean, this whole investigation was not something that they involve a town on a daily basis with. So we appreciate your input for the information that we weren't made aware of.
Dean, did you matter to the DA's office if they didn't communicate?
No, no, no. If that's the way, you know, they handle matters, who am I to say, "I don't like it", you know? That's the way it's done, and I have no problems.
Can I just, I just wanted to add something to what you had said before about the $250. For me, as somebody new elected to the board, kind of, I'm still have my training wheels on, if you will, okay? I rely on the department heads being able to efficiently run their department. I rely on them being trustworthy and truthful in their dealings with the Board of Selectmen. As representatives of the town, I feel that we need and deserve our department heads to conduct themselves in a manner like that. So for me, I want to say, speaking for myself, not for the board, you can't put a price on trust, quite frankly. So once that is broken, you know, this board is not tasked with micromanaging departments. That's not how I want to conduct myself. That's out of the scope of the position that I was elected to. So we really need department heads who can be truthful, honest, ethical leaders for the town.
I would like to also address the amount of money. It sounds piddling, and when I saw the accounting in the paper, I was thinking to myself, that's the initial findings. That was what, if you will, raised the flag that made this information, made this board pass this information on to town council. As Mr. Cronin said, the number has grown. I don't know what the total is at this point, and I'm not sure we've reached the total yet. But I will say this from an audit standpoint, when you start to do an audit, if you find something, you continue digging until you stop finding things. If you're doing an audit and you're digging, you don't find anything, you move on. What, I feel betrayed. I have worked with this gentleman since I was appointed to the Finance Committee initially. I think it was in, I don't know, 2002, 2003. I've either continually served as a member of the Finance Committee or also the Board of Selectmen from 2007 to 2010. I was one of the people on that Finance Committee that year after year sat with my colleagues, listened to the explanation, discussed requests for additional equipment, and we're talking big money, and sat with a Finance Committee that continually supported the requests because we trusted. We trusted, we believed. I feel betrayed, number one. Number two, something that needs to be pointed out is that public officials, especially public safety officials, are held to a higher standard. This is certainly not, if you will, it's unacceptable judgment, it's unacceptable conduct. If this were a situation involving a police officer, we would be saying this is conduct unbecoming a police officer, and I think everybody knows what that means. It's a broad brush, but that's what you look at, and it involves everything from how you act, how you conduct yourself, and the basis for everything is trust. What really bothers me is, and why this betrayal is really bothering me, other than the fact that I have worked with him all these years and trusted him. There was a picture in the local paper a couple of weeks ago. He was sitting in one of our schools, and he was talking to small children, and I believe he was talking about safety and things like that. That bothers me because children look at police and fire and other officials with awe and respect, and I want to be one of them someday. And I find that very disturbing.
My name is Madeline Wright from Channel 12 in Providence, and I wanted to ask, what is your understanding of what specific items he was misusing the funds to buy, and who was he buying it for? His wife, girlfriend?
Well, the only thing that we've all read in all your articles that have been published that was made aware to us was articles, women's clothing to his girlfriend. That's the extent of what we know right now. If these invoices that pass through the town accountant before it gets to the town treasurer to be paid on a weekly basis, if they weren't scratched out or whitened out or the word "women" was whitened out and "men" was printed in, it would have been unnoticed. But there were obvious catches by the audit, mostly women clothes. Will something else transpire from it? I don't know. It could. Like Selectman Goulart just mentioned, who did audits for many, many years, many years, she knows, you keep looking as long as there's something there. When you stop finding things, that's the end of it. We're not done yet. We're still looking. Thank you.
I just have one other question. The decision, can you just explain a little bit how you guys came up with that motion versus termination? And if the charges are dropped for whatever reason, would that change the direction of him holding that position?
The next step is the disciplinary hearing that Chairman Cronin mentioned. If, in fact, everything goes away and he's found innocent, I don't believe charges would be dropped, but if he's found innocent, then I assume the town will be ordered to reinstate with back pay in benefits, okay? My personal opinion is, and again, personal opinion, I'm willing to take the gamble because if he's suspended with pay and found guilty, we'll never get the money back, and I'm not going to pay somebody who is found guilty. By the same token, if he's found innocent... By the same token, if he's found innocent and we're ordered to reinstate with back pay and benefits, I can live with that, because it will go through the court system. And I, like Mr. Cronin and my colleague, Mr. Skarafis, I will trust the legal system. They've handled it well so far, they've taken what we found, they didn't say, oh, you've got nothing, it's $200. No, they took it and they said, let's take a deeper look. So I think as time goes by, and certainly before next March comes, there'll be more information coming out, but I'm willing to take the gamble.
How long has he been chief?
11 years.
And who is the chief now that he's going to be suspended?
Well, in the chain of command, it would be the deputy chief, the way that the whole chain of command is set up. That's something we have to start working on this afternoon, you know.
Is the deputy chief named?
Michael McGee.
And so you've decided to suspend him without pay. Is that effective now, or I just heard you reference a disciplinary hearing? Are there more steps to take before that officially?
That's official right now.
That's official right now, so right now, he's suspended.
Yes, and we were hoping that he'd be here, or we've all, you know, tried different forms of communication to get in touch with him. He hasn't responded to any.
What is his salary?
His salary is roughly, not roughly, it's $2,011.55 a week.
And how much of a clothing allowance do you have?
$1,050.
A year?
Yes.
Does he live here in town?
Yes.
And the disciplinary hearing, when might that be?
We'll have to set that up, because the lawyers will be involved with it and everything. It's just a matter of, I'd like to have it within the next 30 days, at least.
What will that determine? That determines...
We'll have to see.
Depends on what other information comes up in the meantime. But this is an emergency meeting under the open meeting law. To deal with something totally unexpected, and it's public safety, we can't sit back and wait. The law requires that he be given at least 48 hours' notice, and that it be posted, and we follow the open meeting law. I'm not telling you it's going to happen in 48 hours, but as I said, we'll be talking to town council. We will come up with a date, we will offer some dates, because he certainly can be represented by council, and we'll come up with a date, and he'll have an option, whether it's an open to closed meeting, and we'll follow the law.
I understand he was involved in a lawsuit, too, with the, was he involved in a lawsuit with the town or something to that effect? Correct me if I'm wrong. Does he have any complaints over the years that he had, or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of right now. I'm not going to say there wasn't, but not that I, you know.
All right, my fault.
I would like to follow up on one statement you made a little while ago, referring to, am I angry at the district attorney's office? I just want to make it clear, so there's no miscommunication here. The district attorney of Bristol County is a very reputable, qualified individual, Mr. Tom Quinn. I have the highest regard for him and his office. The outcome of this, I feel comfortable of the hands that it's in, and regardless of what our personal feelings are, or what we think should be done, I will accept and respect any decisions that office makes. I just want to make that clear. Is there anyone else? Well, in conclusion, I would like to reach out to every single individual that represents some kind of media here today. For your professionalism, your behavior, it wasn't like a frenzy at a buffet table. I respect how you handle all the articles. For the most part, we didn't see any misconceptions or irregularities in your write-ups, and I commend you all for it, and I thank you all. Feel free, in the near future, you know, call this board for anything that we might be able to help you with, you know, for your stories. I know you all have jobs to do, and if this is any indication, keep doing it the way you've been doing it, and thank you very much.
There is a meeting tonight at 7:30, the regular selectmen's meeting. We'll have our usual agenda items, and there is a period for public input, if anybody who's watching, well, we won't watch this because it's not live, but anyone who would like to come tonight at that meeting, 7:30 in this room, is a regular meeting.
Again, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.